are joining remotely while the city administrator Laura Smith and the city clerk Audrey McClanahan are at their own workspaces at City Hall. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included on the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. Please note that your comments are visible to the entire group. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that has been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Let's begin our meeting tonight and join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Audrey, would you please call roll?
Bolton House.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Rothrock.
Here.
Slash Mocker.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item one, public hearings. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to item two, special presentations, of which we do not have any this evening either. Item three is issuance of notes and bonds. We don't have any of those. So we'll move to item four, consent agenda. Now, our consent agenda has three items tonight. Our council committees met on August 15th and we fully discussed each of these items and that the committees agreed that these items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. Other items considered by the committee committees will be presented under committee reports later on on our agenda tonight. If a council member or a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Is there anyone who would like an item removed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt consent agenda as printed items four A through four C.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
And Flora.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to item five, which is for public comments. If any member of the public participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment on items that are not included on our agenda this evening, now would be the time to make that request. Please submit your comments or questions using the chat feature and remember that your questions are visible to the entire group. All right, moving on to item six, action items from the planning commission. Would you not have any items from our planning commission this evening? So we will go to item seven, committee reports. First of all, council member Crane, would you please provide a report from the finance and administration committee?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. The finance and administration committee met on August 5th and considered seven items, including acceptance of the meeting minutes. The contract for crossing guard services was approved under the consent agenda. There are four additional items for consideration on tonight's regular agenda. First, 7A communication strategy update. Since council's approval of a contract with Crux for communication, branding, and public relations services, the firm has completed the research phase of the contract as well as a marketing audit of existing collateral, website, social media, email, and print publications, and a comparison of Mission's communication practices to those of comparable local governments in the area. Representatives from Crux presented their findings at the finance administration committee in June. Crux has been collaborating with staff to develop a 30, 16, 90, 120 communications plan, that's a day plan, for by coordinating roles and responsibilities in each city department, brainstorming new methods to increase reach and engagement, participating in an introductory meeting with the Mission magazine editorial board, expanding the city's existing list of media contacts, and prioritizing collateral and other deliverables to address as a new branding is implemented. Crux has presented two design concepts for council's consideration. Both concepts aim to highlight the best of Mission in a way that feels current and unique and is reflective of the feedback Crux sought from a variety of stakeholder groups. If there is consensus around one of the design options, development of the new branding materials will begin right away. The new branding will be incorporated in things like applications, meeting notices, official letterhead, printed publications, apparel, city vehicles, and more. The implementation of the new designs will be made in a thoughtful manner, balancing considerations for visibility, frequency of use, and cost. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve a rebranding design for use throughout the city's communication, including logo, signage, website, and other essential materials.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Ballin.
Mayor, I'd just be interested in hearing a little bit from Emily on the focus group process and get sort of what their consensus was and maybe also what staff's views were on the design, design options rather.
All right.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Flora and Councilmember Crane. We have, since we shared with council at our first reveal meeting, the logo designs, we heard some, our plan following that meeting was to go public with the design options. We made a slight tweak as a result of that feedback from you all in terms of the balancing of one of the two options, but moved forward with the two logo design choices. We posted that through all of our social media channels and outreach methods to receive feedback. Where we had the option two, we did a poll and kind of just asked and invited people to vote between option one, which is what we were calling it, and option two. We also, as that, as that feedback was rolling in, we shared the branding concept slides that talked about the research background, the values and qualities that we had heard represent Mission, and in this effort gave it, gave a nod to those types of values and qualities that we heard in that process. We shared those with, with staff, took their feedback as well, and then had a focus group. We invited all of the members that we had included in focus groups through the research phase, which was kind of a cross-section of residents, business, church, leadership, et cetera, throughout the community. And so we just threw the net open to say if anyone would like to come and participate with a focus group. So that took place last Monday. That process was very thoughtful and they had the time to kind of dive in with us and review both designs. As a result of that, oh, sorry, there's, um, as a result of that discussion, we made just a couple of other choices that we felt like, because there were different elements in terms of color, script, font, and logo mark, we thought we had heard kind of a bubbling up of feedback that we thought we could congeal kind of around a few tweaks to make like-to-like choices to bring forward to you sort of a vetted option choice that really focuses on the decision between the two logo marks, an option one and option two. So that's what we were thinking we would come to today. I know that most of you have sort of done a straw poll and given me some feedback about your preference between the two designs. It's split, as is both, a lot of the feedback that we're hearing. There's, you know, where we have actually hard numbers or went down through the comments and chose who was suggesting one and who was suggesting two. There is what I would call general approval of the logo designs, but not a firm preference for option one or option two. And so if we can, throughout discussion, if the group, if there's anyone on the group that feels extremely strongly, staff is comfortable with moving forward with either one, we can get into more finite kind of thought behind either one, if that helps you, or some preferences, but what we'd like to come out of tonight with is a logo mark decision that we could start applying in different applications.
Emily, could you put them up on the screen? Because I think they weren't in our packet, so that the public, if anyone's watching, knows what we're talking about with option one and number two.
Sure. Are you seeing that then?
Yeah, I can see that now. I mean, I personally, I like option one better. I like the messaging. I like that it's, you know, the four, the M being the four wards and intersecting and creating both, you know, crossroads in our community. And I think the information we received also suggested, you know, the cross, crossroads of Johnson County. And so I like option one personally.
And as the process funneled down and we started refining and refining, we felt like that those types of items, elements were important to represent in either one, but we are getting that, that reflected in comments. We've got the M's there, the four colors that show the sub-brand options or the departments that work in both. So the reason, you know, they're, they're both kind of different takes, but on similar themes. And we've heard that kind of answered back to us from some of the feedback.
Ken, did you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering about the poll that you did. How did that fare in terms of the response?
Yes, we kind of, because we were polling in multiple places, it was sort of tricky. I can share, how best to do this? So Facebook, for example, and so this was when we started counting responses and we kind of just, so Facebook, option one, 25 votes. Facebook, option two, 29. So 25 to 29. Twitter, option one, 41 votes. Option two, 25. And that was the biggest kind of poll across. Nextdoor's poll, 39 votes for option one, 53 for option two. So flipped the other direction. So when you really total those numbers I just read, it's 105 for option one and 107 for option two. And there may be some additional votes that came in since we kind of did a cutoff, but that was sort of generally reflective. And I can read some of the feedback. We did get some really engaged response from staff, from employees as we started brainstorming about the ways we could use it and, and that kind of thing. That was really encouraging. The inclusivity and kind of that working together message was answered back to me in feedback where like we can tackle anything, we're in it together. That kind of inner weave really played through with option one. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
I have a couple. Number one, I just spoke with Emily prior to the meeting and expressed to her, I have had comments coming in electronically and via phone that are not all positive. Some people, and I realize that you did a full, a full gamut of collection of information from staff. Some people have expressed concerns about the sunflower. They want the sunflower incorporated, whether it's old, new, and different, they want that back in. That was just comments I've gotten and that was pretty consistent messaging. Second one, it seems like when we met Emily with the group, he, someone mentioned, maybe, maybe it was Susie Gibbs, mentioned that the Kansas, the K looks like a C with a slash in front of it. I noticed they said something about possibly changing it and it hasn't been changed. Is that still going to be the way the Kansas is going to look?
Actually, I believe that is a modified version. So it's, it's still, it's slightly different than the, the one that the focus group saw. So we tried to improve upon that just for additional legibility and from, from the focus group.
I, I don't see a whole lot of difference, but maybe it's just me. Okay.
Any other questions? Ken?
Emily, do you want to talk about the color?
Oh, sure. So one of the, which I shared with the council ahead of the meeting, the, the real, the feedback that we took from the focus group was a few changes. So when we were trying to kind of circle around a few of the shared concepts, what people liked was that script Kansas, that it represented a handwritten letter, something that's very homey and personalized. And so we thought, let's hold those, let's have that reflected in both options. Another option was the choice between the navy blue in Mission and that darker blue color in the logo mark that had been prior, you know, shown in the previous iteration versus a color that had been shown in option one. So we landed on kind of a more shared, balanced darker blue color. Then in the previous iterations that we shared with the public and with you all, the green was a brighter, more yellow green color. And the focus group felt like that should be a darker green, a more true green, green. And so we landed on this option. And we, again, we're talking about the four colors and using them in sub-brands in, in marks where we might play with one color over the other based on the department that it's representing. But council member Davis did share with me this afternoon, he is colorblind and that, that the choice between the two, the green and the orange is less distinguishable or not distinguishable in this iteration. So, you know, we, we were working with that originally, but in that change. And it depends on who you ask. We've, we've surveyed a few others. So I think it, it depends on how that kind of manifests for people, but we can continue to investigate that so that it's most successful. But the logo mark would be the big decision to, to land on and agree upon, so we can kind of start the design. And then I think color can be flexible to find that right balance.
Trent.
Thanks, Merrick. I mentioned this to some extent in the last time we spoke about these, but I think both logos get us to a good place. After kind of thinking about the messaging behind option one, as far as the inclusivity and all the wards working together and kind of the blended arrows going into to each section, I think that's my preference. And I'd just like to thank staff and everybody else who participated in the polls and the, the focus groups to get us to this place. I think this is the story we want to tell about ourselves, that we're all a diverse group who's able to kind of have one common goal. So I am in favor of option one.
All right, so I can't see the entire screen, so if somebody's raising their hand, I can't see it. But I guess we probably should take an informal straw poll and just see, I mean, to me, both logos look fine. It's a little bit of preference. One's a little, you know, one's just a little different, but they're, they're pretty similar. So I guess we take, I mean, are we okay with taking an informal straw poll to see which one we move forward and then approve the action?
Are we allowed to opt out of that straw poll? I personally, I brought some feedback up in the last work session also that I'm not a big fan of either of these. I think, you know, it's nice and modern looking, but to me, it seems like a very generic logo. And I really wish we would have been able to incorporate either some of the sunflower design or something else that's kind of been the tradition and all the stuff around Mission over the years. We weren't given any kind of choice in anything like that, but I honestly think you could take the word, you could take Mission and replace it with any other city around here and it would work just the same for any of them. And it's, it's a nice, modern design, but also just seems kind of generic to me. I'm not a big fan of it, honestly. So I, I wish there was some way to have some other option. I did bring that up before and nothing's ever come of that, but anyway, I'm not a fan of either of them, so I don't know if the straw poll, I don't know how, how that would work, or how we're supposed to vote on sorting this out tonight.
Well, the straw poll would be one or two, and then the vote would be on approving the logo. And that would be, if you did not like it, I guess you would vote against it.
Okay.
Is that your understanding, Emily?
Yes, I mean, I don't know if we, that would probably be the safest thing. I don't know if people feel strongly enough that they would not be comfortable. If we were going with one of the two of these choices, are you okay with either one? Or would you really feel strongly against one of the two options? So rather than choosing between these and something else, or which would be reflective in the vote. But a straw, straw poll would help us clarify the motion.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I have a question for Emily, please. Emily, the totals for option one, 105, and option two, 107, were those reflective of the original designs or these current designs?
They were the sort of, the midpoint before the green was changed, the colors more like, and the script. So they, the option one had the non-cursive Kansas. But when the question, what was tweaked between the first original that you saw was the option two that was not as balanced? So I don't know if that's what your question is, but that, that was changed before the public saw it and before they voted. But the public did not see this version of green or the Kansas on both.
Okay, that, that was my question, and I am pretty indifferent to either one. I think I echo some of council member Slash Mocker's sentiments, but I'm comfortable moving ahead if everyone else feels like they're ready to.
Debbie, did you have a question?
Well, I, I know it's, I know we can't go backwards, but initially there were 12 individual logo designs. Were there not, Emily?
Well, even more than that, as, as terms of sketches, so very loose, rough designs that we worked with Crux to, to funnel down to have some sort of choice presentation for you all, a recommendation.
Okay. Can you just, just briefly tell me, are the other nine or 10 or however many there are that you looked at initially, are they on the same paramount with this, with these logos? Are they completely different? Or I, I would like to have seen a variety. These are just two, just same color, same situation, but just a little bit different. I would like to have seen something a little bit different.
The consensus, I mean, the way that we funneled was really to try to achieve what we were hearing and aiming for. And so some of the, the original designs were, I just don't believe they would have received the same level of positive feedback that I don't think that they, you know, it's, it's playing around with different concepts and then something jumping out at you and saying, okay, let's play with a few of these themes. And, but ultimately believing in the process of getting to something with some degree of choice, but something that does reflect the level and balance of friendly, welcoming, inclusive, as well as professional and, you know, really strong delivery of city services that you can rely on. And so that sort of balance, we felt like we were, we had a couple of options to provide that could, you know, be ready, be ready for the public. Designing, you know, with a lot of people's input is really, really tricky and subjective, but we felt like we could stand behind this recommendation based on those things.
Okay, is that Emily talking or is that Crux talking?
Absolutely me. I believe in these logos quite a bit, and I was terrified to put them out in public. And for what we did and what we shared and how wide open we blew it, I think, I, I feel like no logo update process is easy and no change is easy either. But I think, especially when I started hearing staff's feedback rolling in and started talking about where we would apply it and what we would use it with, I get energized every time we talk about it and I, I really, I believe in it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'll just add, just, just a couple of things to, to that. I mean, what I can tell you is that in, in kind of the first iteration, this is very much a middle ground. So there were some very, there were some logo designs that were very heavily themed around architectural elements. And while we've talked about some of those being reflected in both of these designs that we're considering this evening, you know, the arches of, of the M's, they were much more pronounced. And, and they truly looked like we were talking about a building or a structure. And this is all feedback that we provided. I said all of these same things to Crux in, in some of these meetings. So I don't, I'm not stepping on toes or hurting feelings here. And so, you know, we had, trying to capture that element. But the other thing that we talked about was, do we want to be tied to our architecture? Because as, as the architecture changes over time and the styles change over time, you know, that's something that, that we talk about a lot and can either date us or leave us in a, in a particular, you know, period of time. So we moved, I think, fairly quickly in that process through those ones that were very much just architecturally focused. I think we also had a lot of feedback as we walked through those that they felt you didn't get that same sense of community. There was a lot more sense of corporate or some type of office building or, you know, something that, that didn't resonate with community. And then we looked at a whole variety that, what I would consider to be more on the, picking up on the themes of sort of our quirky, more whimsical, approachable, you know, type nature. And we felt as if, and, and me specifically, my, I think my feedback there was that it doesn't communicate that sense of professionalism that I think is so important that, that we, while we want to be approachable, particularly as a local government entity and as a community, we, we also want to be perceived as professional and incompetent and, and serious. And so finding kind of that balance is what led us to some of the options in the middle. And honestly, when we looked at the first iterations, we looked at everything in grayscale. So we were not reacting at all to colors. And Crux was very anxious to get us to the point to, to narrow it down so they could start to reveal the colors and tell some of those additional stories. And I, I feel similarly to, you know, to Emily. I'm energized by kind of what I see. I hear and understand and appreciate, you know, the, the feedback that we've had from you, that we've had from staff, that we've had from the community. But I, I look at, and probably for me, I look at option one, which they will all tell you is, I flipped on them. I started out being an option two fan, but option one, that icon and that connectivity and that connectedness and those intersections speak volumes, I, I think, from, from my perspective. So that's just, that's my, I'm more a two cents.
All right, do we want to go forward with the straw poll to see if one or two? And then if neither one suits your fancy, then I guess you can vote against the motion. Is that? All right, Audrey, would you just call a straw poll, please?
Sure.
You can say one or two.
Bolton House.
One.
Davis.
Two.
Flora.
One.
Inman.
One.
Crane.
One.
Rothrock.
One.
Slash Mocker.
Two.
I'm sorry, two?
Yeah, two.
Thank you. Thomas.
One.
That's the majority in option one.
All right, so that brings us now to the motion. Any more discussion before we call for a vote on the motion with option one?
Just a comment.
Yes, Ken.
Sorry, go on.
It's all right. I just wanted to make sure that you understood the issue about the color. The suggestion is that perhaps since the green was something that people wanted to bring it down to more of a forest color, I, from a colorblind point of view, I would just suggest then to work on the orange to make it more vivid or something that just, you know, changes it a little bit from, from the tone of the green. Because otherwise, I can't tell the difference between the two.
Nick?
I just wanted to be clear, we're just voting on the logo in this motion, right? Or is the communication plan tied to that also, or?
The, the, I understand that the motion is just for the logo.
All right, Audrey, would you call for the vote, please?
Flora.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Debbie, do you have more to your report?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Next, let's move to 7B, which is a 2021 budget resolution. As part of the annual budget process, the city council adopts a budget resolution which outlines and describes the financial policies, tax and fee structures, and other related issues identified in a particular fiscal year. The resolution has been prepared and updated based on the staff, council, and public input received to date in the budget process. Mayor, I move the city council approve the 2021 budget resolution outlining the policy decisions, mill levies, and fees included in the city of Mission, Rock Creek Drainage District #1 and Rock Creek Drainage District #2. Budgets for 2021.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
I'd say thanks to staff for all the time and energy and hard work you guys are putting into getting this together. I know it's always a big undertaking every year. We get to breathe for a couple of months, maybe, but.
Well, thank you, but we'll, we'll be back talking about budget again. I'm confident in our September. I'm confident in our September meeting giving updates on N F status. But thank you, we we appreciate those sentiments.
I would concur with councilmember, councilmember Schlossmacher. Having put together a few budgets in my lifetime, it is a large undertaking. It is a main, it's a main process for our year and where we're going. And it takes a tremendous amount of work. So I do appreciate the effort being put in and the professionalism around the whole effort. Right, Audrey, would you please call for the question?
Mayor, I have a, I have a comment, please.
I'm sorry, Hillary.
No worries, I know, I know it's hard to see everybody. I just also wanted to thank Laura for helping ease some of my concerns in relation to the budget, particularly in in reference to the fund balance and then parks and recs priorities, knowing how conservatively we've budgeted and some of the fund balance specifics and the assurance that we'll revisit the budget prior to 2021 and revisit our financials on a monthly basis. I feel good moving up, moving ahead with this budget. But looking for next year, I hope I hope COVID is behind us. But I do hope that we can start earlier, better engage residents, and hopefully get a better reflection of our fund balance beyond our 25% mark so that we can figure out how we intend to use those buttons beyond the 25%. So, thank you, Laura.
Mayor, I had a quick comment. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to echo what councilmember Thomas said and also add, as I had mentioned, I think, earlier on in our discussions to that I hope Hillary's right, but if COVID isn't behind us and, you know, if we are looking at a recession, I hope that we can talk early about, you know, what does a two or three-year plan look like? Because our reserves, you know, I I'm also comfortable in where we're at this year, but it might get a little dicier down the line. So I really appreciate all of staff's work and the commitment to, you know, bring this back to us frequently and also hope that we can get the community more involved next year.
We hope for that every single year.
Mayor, I have one question for Laura. Laura, I was just wondering if we learned any more about whether we could get reimbursement from Johnson County for any of our housing emergency fund that we have created this year.
So, and I was going to do that under my update, but I'm happy to do that now. So Johnson County has set aside, they finally, once they formed a committee, they've done some work and kind of putting together what is their plan and how do they want to think about distributing the CARES dollars that were allocated? They have tentatively set aside $50 million of the $116 million that they received to be spent within cities or or distributed to cities. They have established essentially a three-phased process and approach to determining how to best allocate the, that $50 million in funding. So phase one has opened up and we actually submitted our first reimbursement for hard expenses, so mostly PPE in our case and and other things that we've done to modify workstations and work areas. And I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of about $20,000 in total of expenses that we have specifically incurred related to COVID since the onset in March. So we will continue to track that. Just to kind of give you a sense of scale, the City of Olathe was the first city to submit in that instance and their their submission was about $283,000. So when you scale down from there, kind of gives you a sense of maybe what the cities are incurring. So our $20,000 was right in line with what Miriam's, Roland Park's, some of those other communities have been spending. So that process will continue. What they've asked us to do, and I believe we are to have all of our items submitted into, they've created a portal system and we've done a series of meetings and trainings on that. But so phase two is they've asked all of the cities to think about and and create essentially what is a wish list item. So those items which you would intend or anticipate having to acquire or purchase or that you would like to do to address, you know, issues arising out of the pandemic, but that basically they want everybody to put that with those wish lists into the portal and then they will make some decisions about, you know, kind of thumbs up, thumbs down on on some of those for reimbursement so that the cities don't go out and expend dollars that they think may not be covered. That housing assistance is part of the wish list item that that will submit. So we will, should have an answer here pretty quickly about whether or not that would be something that we could do. Whether we, it's reimbursable or not, I think we still have the option, obviously, of, you know, partnering with someone, you know, working to collaborate with UCS or one of their partners to do that. So we do have options, but we should know sooner rather than later whether I think that is a CARES reimbursable expense. There are, you know, all manner of things. People have been very creative. We've had a lot of conversation as managers and communities about how to achieve sort of some consistency. We're all sharing wish list items so that if somebody had a great idea and we weren't smart enough to think of it, we don't have to, you know, miss out on taking advantage of a reimbursement. So right now, we're sort of, we have just moved into the wish list phase of that CARES. And the, apparently, the Board of County Commissioners is getting a report every Thursday and they are sort of approving the the items that are reimbursable, at least right now, and the turnaround time on those is pretty quick. But for example, like the wish list, I believe, for Overland Park was somewhere in the neighborhood of about a million dollars. So again, we still are likely going to have a very large portion of the $50 million that they've set aside that, you know, is still available. They are currently, the county has hired two consultants to assist them in evaluating and creating the structure and the mechanisms for distributing the CARES funds. Hired a firm, the name escapes me at the moment, but they're a firm that is working with over $3 billion worth of CARES Act allocations across the country. And they are working with Sedgwick County and some others in the state of Kansas on that. So they have a lot of experience and I think will assist the county in making some some good decisions there. And then kind of the third phase is we're having some conversations around, once we get through the hard reimbursable items, anything that's on the wish list would have to be purchased and not just encumbered or identified, but purchased by the end of the year, so December 31st. So some of the, you know, you kind of limit some of the projects that you might be able to tackle. And then the final phase is having some conversation around whether or not there's just going to be a proportionate distribution or reimbursement of salary and payroll expenses. And so there's been a lot of conversation around how best to do that. Managers throughout and across the county have encouraged the folks at Johnson County to to make the determination. We can't all go back and account for every hour of every police officer or other employee's time that was spent specifically on a COVID-related activity, but you can come up with some averages and the county could, in theory, say, okay, we're gonna, you know, 25% of every, you know, police officer's time between March and July or what whatever that date might be was spent on COVID-related activities. And so that's the portion of your payroll, which has already been expended, that will be reimbursed. The county is struggling to go kind of in in that direction. From the city's perspective, I think we think it's a clean, there are expenses that have legitimately been incurred. They're easily documentable. But that's kind of where we are. So I don't, I I don't know the long answer to how about our $15,000, but it's been a long process and I think we're not, we're not there yet. But we have submitted our first reimbursement. I imagine it will be, that first $20,000 or so will be in the bank. And then we will just continue to work with the county on on our submissions and trying to be as creative and stretch, stretch those dollars. The other, as I understand it, the other consultant that the county has hired is working to see how they can get some of those additional dollars actually out into the community. So whether that be to businesses, et cetera. The challenges that you have there are are the accountability piece and who is ultimately responsible for making sure that those dollars have been spent on exactly what they were identified to be, you know, to be spent on. So that's kind of where we are in that whole CARES, CARES reimbursement process. And so Brian's, Brian's become familiar with the portal. Dan Madden's, I'm sure, loving the portal. But it's an, it's an interesting exercise and I think if nothing else, it has really challenged us and pushed us to think about our operations and how to be flexible going forward and how to maybe think about things that we hadn't thought of before when we, when we found ourselves, you know, dealing with asset shutdowns and interruption to business and all that sort of thing.
All right, I think we have a motion and a second on the table. Audrey, would you please call for the vote?
Laura.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Krang.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Schlossmacher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Tom, I think she said Thomas. It's hard to hear you, Audrey.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Motion carried.
There you go, that's much better volume, Audrey. Whatever you did, stick there.
Mayor, if you're okay, I'll continue with my report.
Yes, please continue.
Next item, seven C, is the 2021 through 2025 CIP resolution. As a part of the annual budget process, the governing body adopts a resolution that addresses the recommended five-year infrastructure plan, also referred to as Mission's Capital Improvement Program, which is CIP. The revenues and expenses programmed in the CIP for 2021 are included in the 2021 recommended budget in the appropriate funds. The remainder of the CIP is designed to be fluid and flexible in order to evaluate and address changes in resources or priorities in future years. Projects which have been identified or discussed but were not specifically included in the 2021 to 2025 CIP are outlined in the body of the resolution in order to establish a public record slash reminder of historical considerations. These projects may eventually be programmed within the five-year plan as a part of the future budget discussions. Approve, excuse me, approval of the 2021 through 2025 CIP does not commit the city to any specific expenditures beyond those detailed in the 2021 budget. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution adopting the City of Mission's 2021 to 2025 Capital Improvement Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Audrey, please call, Debbie?
I I just wanted to thank staff for for putting these together. These can be really complex and I think, thank Brian and Laura very much for putting all this together because it it's really a good job.
Right, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Krang.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Schlossmacher.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried.
Great. The last item is the adoption of the 2021 budget itself. 2021 budget is a balanced budget as required by law and maintains the city's high service levels and sound financial position while also minimizing the tax burden on our citizens and businesses. We believe the 2021 budget conservatively addresses the challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic, which continues to present both short and long-term issues requiring careful evaluation and consideration. The 2021 budget had been discussed and developed through a number of public meetings, including the formal public hearing at the August 5 Finance and Administration Committee meeting. In order to complete the 2021 budget process, the council will take action in the form of three separate motions to formally adopt the 2021 budgets for the City of Mission, Rock Creek Drainage District Number One and Rock Creek Drainage District Number Two. All supporting documentation was previously included as a part of the materials presented in connection with the public hearing on the 2021 budgets at the August 5 Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Therefore, first motion, Mayor, I move the city council approve the 2021 budget for the City of Mission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Schlossmacher.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
And Krang.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second motion I'd like to make, Mayor, I move the city council approve the 2021 budget for the Rock Creek Drainage District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Krang.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Schlossmacher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And the last motion, which is the third motion, Mayor, I move the city council approve the 2021 budget for the Rock Creek Drainage District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Thomas.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Krang.
Aye.
Schlossmacher.
Aye.
And Bolton House.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to councilmember Flora. Will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on August 5 and considered nine items. But these included acceptance of the committee minutes and the resolution to ratify emergency expenditure for repairs to the chiller, which were all approved on the consent agenda. There is one additional item tonight for the council's consideration on our regular agenda tonight. This is item seven E, the pre-development agreement with Mission Bowl LLC. Sunflower Development Group has expressed an interest in redeveloping the former Mission Bowl property at 5399 Martway Street into a multifamily residential development project. Sunflower has formed Mission Bowl, a limited liability corporation for this undertaking, and they will be making a request for public assistance. It is mission standard practice for the city to enter into a pre-development agreement with the developer for the purpose of outlining terms for review and consideration of the project, including any public assistance that may be requested. The pre-development agreement recognizes Sunflower as the exclusive developer and requires that they provide an upfront payment of $10,000 to cover the city's costs associated with review of their application. The pre-development agreement does not bind the city to accepting the proposed development project, nor does it obligate the city to approve the use of tax increment financing or the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the sale tax exemption. It does ensure that costs incurred in the review and analysis of the request will be covered by the developer. Mayor, I move the city council approve the pre-development agreement with Mission Bowl LLC for review and consideration of the redevelopment of the former Mission Bowl site at 5399 Martway Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, Ken.
Yeah, I just would like to say I support this project the way it's been presented to us. And I think that this makes a lot of sense for us to have this in place in order to move forward on the development.
Any other discussion?
The only other thing I might add, Mayor, is I know, and I know Brian is planning to send out a link, but the preliminary development plan for this project will be on the Planning Commission's agenda next Monday evening. And I believe that packet is posted to the website. So if you want to go take a look at that, certainly you could do that. You know, you may hear from constituents now that 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 packet is is public. But Brian and I were talking about, and he'll get the link out to, or he or Caitlin will get the link out to you.
Debbie, did you have a question?
I was just going to mention that the Planning Commission is
I was just going to mention that the Planning Commission is considering the development plan on Monday. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Crane.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Schlossmacher.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Davis. Rothrock.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And Mayor, that concludes my CDC report.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, unfinished business. We do not have any, so we'll move on to item nine, new business. And we do have a new business item. It's a massage establishment application. Who is going to give us a discussion of this?
I can do. Audrey can certainly update that if you'd like. Just speak up just a tiny bit.
Yep.
Okay. Is that, sometimes my mic wants to work, sometimes it doesn't.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Sherry Rennie of Elemental Massage and Wellness has submitted the required application and documentation to operate as the sole massage therapist at 5845 Horton in Suite 202. Chief Hadley has approved her background check and the inspection of the premise has been completed and approved as well. Earlier this year, council approved the massage establishment permit for Christine Foltland at the same location. However, Ms. Foltland had to relocate out of state and is in the process of selling this business to Ms. Rennie. So in order for Ms. Rennie to not have a 30-day period of interruption to her business, we bring this application to your consideration tonight. Thank you.
The only thing that I would add is that Ms. Rennie was licensed at the end of July as a massage therapist, which is an administrative process to perform massage at Elemental Massage and Wellness, so she is not new to the business entirely. But again, as, as Audrey mentioned, typically this would, the council does need to approve the establishment permit. And we were trying to be accommodating so as not to provide for interruption in her, in her business.
Mayor.
Yes, Ken.
I move that the city approve the massage establishment permit for Sherry Ryan of Elemental Massage and Wellness at 5845 Horton, Suite 202.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Audrey, please call for the vote.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Schlossmacher.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our new business items. Moving on to item 10, comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share?
I do.
Ken?
I just wanted to remind everybody that we're going to have a Ward Four meeting on September the 15th. I don't know that we're going to have a council meeting before that, so I just wanted to alert that Consular Flora and myself are going to post it on Zoom.
Okay. Hillary, did you want to ask a question?
I did. I apologize. I didn't know there wouldn't be more further discussion in relation to our communications plan. I just had a question and I apologize, apologize if Crux isn't still on, but Emily, I'm sure you can answer it. I noticed in the plan, and I've asked about it before, but we don't address our events very specifically in the plan. And I'm just wondering if that's going to be an element that comes later in the process with Crux? Because I do think our events are a really critical piece of our marketing plan.
Yes, absolutely. So do you mean our special events, our, the big community events? Yes. So we've got everything mapped that we would do in a typical year and then theoretical events as well mapped out on a editorial calendar. So those things get the attention and the forethought well in advance kind of for the strategy of it. So those things are built in. No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Right. Anybody else have a comment? Debbie?
I just want to thank Councilmember Thomas for leading the discussion for finance on the August 5 meeting because I was not here. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Nick?
Although you couldn't join us, Mr. Mayor, we, myself, Councilmember Boltinghouse, Penn, we were able to go out there and still bring back the mission trophy back to its rightful place from the Northeast Johnson County Chamber scramble. So glad we were able to face that stiff competition from Miriam and beat him.
That's great to hear.
Nice work.
Anybody else? All right, then we'll move on to item 11, Mayor's Report. I don't have any, so we'll move to the City Administrator's Report, item 12, Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of items. First of all, if you haven't seen the amazing City Hall Selfie Day video that Emily Randall put together for us for City Hall Selfie Day last Friday, you should go out to our Facebook page and take a look. It was pretty fun and I think way cooler than anybody else's that, that I saw. So thanks to everybody who participated. I know that Councilmember Davis, Crane, Boltinghouse, and Rothrock were able to join us that day and, and participate in that. So it was fun and what I heard more than anything was, wow, this is the first time in like four months that we've all been anywhere even remotely, you know, in proximity to one another. So it was good, even masked up and six feet apart, it was good to, to be able to have those interactions. We had a Mission Magazine Editorial Board meeting for the month this morning and just kind of reviewing and recapping. I hope everyone has received their latest issue of the magazine, the July issue that had Kevin Fullerton of Springboard Creative featured on the cover. That just want to, just a reminder, a standing reminder that if you have story ideas, please, 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 please feel forward, you know, forward those on to, to me or to others. We're always looking for story ideas. We are well on our way to the issue that will come out in September. And hard to believe that we're talking about the end of the year and the last, final issue for 2020 in, in those planning stages. And just a really fun note about the magazine. If you recall, we did a kind of a feature story on the history of the Dearborn Neighborhood Parade and what a great tradition that has been. And the Burgs, who have, have been hosts of that for many, 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 many years, were looking to sort of pass the torch. And I think we've found someone to connect them with. I had another resident in the neighborhood who, after reading the article, would, had, asked to sort of be put in touch with that. And so I think it's just a great testament to what the community builder, the magazine is. And a lot of fun to, to just be able to, to work on and share with our residents. I think, Mayor, I think Solly has raised her hand.
Solly?
Yeah, just on, on the idea front, and Emily might have already mentioned this to you, but Debbie and I have heard from the Sustainability Commission on multiple occasions about their enthusiasm for the Mission Magazine. And they would love, I think, to have the opportunity to discuss having a regular sustainability corner in the magazine as a feature or a small section.
I think we started them in the newsletter, then this July issue, and I think we're full steam ahead. We're planning on, on continuing that. So, um, very, so just a reminder that we will have our next Harvester's Mobile Food Distribution event coming up at the end of this month on the 29th of August at 7:00 AM in the parking lot at Shawnee Mission North High School. And then we will have one more event in 2020, and that will be on October 31st. So looking forward, looking forward to all of that. And finally, I just wanted to share a little bit of information and more coming both tomorrow and Friday. But next Wednesday, August 26th, we are going to have our first work session on our issues around sort of police data, accountability, and some of the racial equity issues that we've been talking about. We have, we had really hoped to be in a position to start having these conversations with in-person meetings. And I, again, I just don't think that makes sense. And so particularly for our August 26th work session and the one coming on September 2nd, they are very data-heavy and information-heavy. And there'll be charts and graphs and tables and policy documents and all of that. So we feel like moving ahead with those, these first two meetings virtually makes some sense. So the agenda will be available tomorrow. I finalized it with the chief and the members of the command staff late this afternoon. And then we will have a packet that will be available and posted on, on Friday, particularly having many of the policies, which we'll be discussing, so people have ample opportunity to do that. Some of the additional data will come either later next week or as part of the, the actual presentation on Thursday. But we will be posting that to the website on social media. Our plan at this point is to email that information out and encourage people to attend and participate through our Constant Contact email list to all of our board and commission members, to the Mission Business Partnership Network that we have, our HOA contacts, the church contacts, and the apartment property manager contacts that we have kind of pulled together through all of our COVID situation. And then we're certainly open if there are others that you would like for us to reach out, out to, to invite to these conversations. We're happy to do that.
All right. That concludes item 12. Let's move on to item 13, executive session. We do not have an executive session needed for this evening. So before we adjourn, I do want to share with the public that the video from this meeting is available through our link on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.